We will call this Monday, August 26th, regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary, please.
All board members are present tonight. Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, please rise for the pledge being led by, we have a Boy Scout, Andrew, to lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I assume we have no public comments. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to approval of consent items. On consent this evening is the personnel report, claims, payroll, approval of gift applications. We have three gifts, one from some parents, one from Central Indiana Community Foundation, and one is an award to the Science Department. We also have minutes to special session July 10th, executive session July 10th, and regular session July 22nd. May I have a motion to approve consent? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? No. Consent, the motion to approve consent carries. Next, we will move to action items. The first item we have is adoption of Policy 2500, Teacher Appreciation Grant. The presenter is Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this policy is a policy that the Board does need to adopt each year to determine that there will be a separation between effective and highly effective teachers for the Teacher Appreciation Grant. And so it was updated with the new dates on the policy, and this is the second reading.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the action item for the adoption of Policy 2500, Teacher Appreciation Grant?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion, any questions? Katie.
So just to confirm, the only change on this policy is the date?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we will vote all in favor of approving the adoption of Policy 2500, Teacher Appreciation Grant. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have under action items is the bus driver agreement. The presenter is Mr. McMichael, who I understand is at a BZA hearing this evening, so Dr. McMichael, Dr. McMichael, Dr. Bearsford. Would you like to make the presentation?
Sure. But as we go through our non-certified staff, one of the employee groups that we have, we have a Bus Drivers Association, and they ratified the attached agreement. And this is a proposed agreement to provide salary increases equivalent to the increases that we approved for other members of the support staff. It is a two-year agreement, and so, and that was attached to the agenda for you all. So we'd like you to, the proposal is that we recommend the Board approve the attached agreement between the Board of School Trustees and the Carmel Clay School Bus Drivers Association.
May I have a motion to approve the bus driver agreement?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? Pam?
Yes. It just occurred to me, will, since we have teachers who are bus drivers at this point, and they become members of the Teachers Union, or the Teachers Association, will they also be a member of the Bus Drivers Association, or can they be in both?
You know, as far as being in the association, that's their choice, but they do have the option of being in either association if they so choose.
But not both?
I don't think there's anything that keeps them from being in one or the other.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just checking.
Any other questions? I guess I have a, I guess I have a question. Has this already been approved by the association? And I know that since we first seen the draft, there was a tweak, a cleanup item, and I'm assuming that's been shared with them, not that it's very substantive, but we just cleaned up who the agreement covers.
I did not know that, because Mr. McMichael takes care of this, so I don't have detailed information on what conversation they've had, but I do know that they ratified it, and it's really more of a matter of the raises for the next two years in language, but I don't know that he had a specific conversation about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of approving the bus driver agreement for, it would be the 2019 through 2021 school years, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, am I skipping something? No. The monthly financial reports. I guess at this point, can I have a motion to switch the order of reports so that we would take the Advanced Ed Engagement Review first, and then when Mr. McMichael comes here, we could do the monthly financial update? May I have a motion? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of switching the order of the reports from 5.1 to 5.2? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move to the presentation on Advanced Ed Engagement Review. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, I want to share some more in-depth information on our Advanced Ed Performance Accreditation Review. As I shared at our Board Advance, very holistically, the information that we gleaned from this review from outside evaluators very much jived with the information that we looked at as far as our needs and our next steps. So that was a really good way to measure, to make sure we're on the right track where we bring in these outside evaluators. So, Colleen, can you pull it up on there? There it is. So, we do participate in Advanced Ed Performance Accreditation. So why would we participate? Why do we want to participate in this? And what the Advanced Ed Performance Accreditation does is it gives us an outside look at the work that we're doing. We're very much about that continuous improvement, but we want to make sure that we bring in other people voluntarily to look at the work that we're doing to determine, are we on that right track? And so what the Advanced Ed does, it really helps us to leverage the quality of our education that we provide for our students, as well as the quality of that continuous improvement. As Dr. Bearsford has set the stage for this year, is we're the best at getting better. And we very much are about that continuous improvement, and we want to make sure we're continuously getting better at those pieces. It also helps us to examine the entire school system, so it looks at the programming, it looks at our culture and our climate, and it also looks at stakeholder perceptions. And in this review, we engaged many of our stakeholders that I'll talk more about throughout both the internal and the external review. And it really looks at, it evaluates the school system and performance against performance-based, research-based, Advanced Ed performance standards. So these standards are very much based on what's best practice research, looking at what do schools, very effective schools, do well, and they take those standards, and then we measure our progress against those standards. So first, before we have the external review, we engage in a very rigorous internal review. And this looks at all of the, all of our systems within place, and we measure our performance against what they call their system quality factors diagnostic. So we engage in these diagnostic tools that Advanced Ed provides for us, and each of our schools engage using these diagnostic tools, as well as the district as a whole. So we take, our principals worked with their school improvement teams at each school, and then we looked at it, worked with all of our principals, to look at our data and compare it against these diagnostic tools. So some of the data that we used is we did a thorough review of our student performance data, looked at how are our students achieving over time in both achievement and, as well as growth. We looked at stakeholder perception data, and when we engaged our stakeholders, we engaged our students, our staff members, both certified staff members and our classified staff members, and we engaged parents, as well as administrators. And we had a variety of different tools that Advanced Ed has, that we asked our stakeholders to, to answer questions in forms of surveys, and also in forms of inventories, and to really look at our progress. And then we took that information and synthesized that information to help to answer the questions on the diagnostic. We also engaged in classroom observation data, and this was really looking at not what are the teachers doing in the classroom, but what are the students doing in the classroom? And these same observation tools, they have a tool called the Elliot Observation, and we engaged in having those observations, and we completed 101 observations for our internal review. And then Advanced Ed, the external review, participants came, and they engaged in 84 classroom observations on the days that they were here as well. And we were using the same tool, looking at different measures that I'll talk about a little bit later in our report here. And then we also looked at our organizational data as a whole, so looking at the holistic data, looking at our policies, our procedures we have in place, the processes that we have in place, we looked at that as a whole to answer the diagnostic questions. So that was the internal review, and from there, we developed, here are areas that, here are our strengths that we have, and here are areas that we need to continue to move forward with. And when our Advanced Ed visitors came, we did a report, Dr. Bearsford, Mr. McMichael, and myself, we did a report for our Advanced Ed visitors, and set the stage to share with them information about our district, but then also to share with them, these are the things that we found from our internal review. We also, as we developed the documents for our team members that came in to review us, we added many different documents and samples of evidence from over the last five years, because this is a five-year process that we're looking at, of where we're moving towards the diagnostic pieces. And so they had many documents from a district perspective, as well as they had documents from all of our 15 schools, that they had access to. So some of those documents might have been student achievement data that we shared with them, some of them might be different board workshop topics we did over the years, some of them may be different professional development pieces. It was, there was all kinds of different evidence that we included in the documentation, which was quite large for our team to review. So after the internal review, then we engaged in the external review, and this was our External Engagement Review Committee, and they came to visit us back in April. They were here from April 14th to 17th. All of you had the opportunity to either interview with them in person or on the phone, because they interviewed each one of you separately, as well as Dr. Bearsford. They met with stakeholders, ranging from, they met with all of our principals, they met with teachers and students in the six buildings that they visited, and then they also met with parents, as well as community members over here. And we had a really great participation in our parents, as well as our community leaders out in the community that came in and shared their time to participate in this important process for us. As I said, they visited schools, they visited six of our 15 schools, so because they only had, they had six different team members, and then they broke up in teams of two, and so they would go out to the schools, and so they did not have time to visit all 15 schools. And they chose the schools prior to the visit. I sent to the evaluation chair the demographics of each of our schools, and then they came back and said, these are the schools we want to visit. And so they picked the schools that they visited, because they wanted to get a wide range of the different demographics throughout the district to see all of the schools. And then they also spent time reviewing the documentation that we put together for them, and then they compiled that engagement review report. And so the results are, I'm happy to say, that our district, as well as all 15 of our schools, received a certificate of accreditation that we have, we're getting those framed so we can put our certificate in here in our board meeting, and then all of our schools also receive a certificate, which is good news, that we have, we've received that full accreditation, and it's good for the next five years, as this is a five-year process. But down into the, some of the more specifics of the report. So when the external team came, they looked at the Advanced Ed Standards Diagnostic Results, and they looked at our performance against, and rated it against their standards. And the standards are focused around three different domains. So they have leadership capacity domain, learning capacity domain, and resource capacity domain. And in those three domains, there's a possibility of four different ratings. So you can have exceeds expectations in the blue, so you're exceeding, you're demonstrating the noteworthy practices and producing clear results that exceed expectations, meets expectations, so it pinpoints quality practices that meet those standards, emerging, where you are, you have some good practices going on, but you need to continue to work on those practices, and then also needs improvement. And that identifies areas that you really need to focus on, and they're based on their standards. So the leadership capacity domain is focused on really looking at the fidelity and the commitment to the purpose and the direction of the corporation, looking at the district's effectiveness of governance and leadership to enable the district to realize its stated objectives, also the ability to engage and involve stakeholders in meaningful and productive ways, and the capacity to implement strategies that improve learner and educator performance. This area was very much a strength for us, as you can see, based on all of the leadership capacity standards, we exceeded or met expectations in all areas, in all of the different standards under the leadership capacity domain. So the learning capacity domain is really looking at those positive and productive teacher and learner relationships, making sure the district is holding high expectations and standards for all of our students, as well as our staff, challenging and making sure we have challenging and engaging curriculum for our students, making sure that we have that quality instruction and the comprehensive support that enable all of our learners to be successful, as well as our assessment practices and looking at monitoring and measuring the learner's progress over time so that we can make sure that they are achieving and growing. And again, in this area, we are exceeding or meeting expectations in all areas, so that is definitely another strength for us in that learner capacity domain. And then the third domain is the resource capacity. So looking at the use and the distribution of our resources, stated against our mission for the district, also looking at how the resources are distributed and utilized equitably throughout the corporation so that we're effectively meeting the needs of all of our students, also looking at the utilization of the resources, and also the support for professional development for both teachers, as well as other classified staff members as well. And then also looking at the allocation of those resources, and to ensure appropriate levels of funding, sustainability, organizational effectiveness, and increase student learning. And again, this was a strength for our district as well. We exceeded or met expectations in all areas. The only area that we came out as emerging in is looking at those digital resources, and as you know, that's been a journey that we have been on, and we're still on that journey. We're headed in the right direction, but as we have continued to increase the number of devices in our classrooms, increase the technology that we're using, those digital resources, and then really looking at how are we using that, not only to just have the devices in students' hands, but to truly amplify that learning, is an important journey that we've been on, and we've come a long way, as you'll see, as I have some comparison data from our last visit, as well as this one. So that's an area that we have some emerging trends in, but we still have more room to grow from, based on the information that our outside evaluators shared with us. So this is the learning environment. This is from the Elliot Tool. These were the classroom observations that they did when they visited, and as I said, they visited 84 different classrooms, and these observations were 20-minute observations. When they went into the classrooms, they were looking at very specific areas, but they were looking at the student's response. And the different areas were looking at equitable learning environment, high expectations environment, supportive learning environment, active learning environment, progress monitoring and feedback environment, well-managed learning environment, and digital learning environment. And so the first column there in the 2019 CCS ratings that you see, that is showing what their rating was, and this is out of four, a possible four, and there are several different subareas under each one of these environments that makes up the overall average. So you can see our, our biggest strengths were in the supportive learning environment with a 3.74, as well as that well-managed learning environment. But these, this data doesn't give us a lot to think about, unless we have something to compare it to. So the middle column is looking at, it's called the 2019 AIN Rating, and what that is, is that is the average of all of the districts that are in Advanced Ed Accreditation. That is the average over all of those different districts. So you're looking, so you're comparing that to the average. So this would be similar to us comparing our I-Learn scores with the state average. This is comparing it to all of the schools across, not only the United States, but Advanced Ed has schools nationally as well, but that's their ratings. But you can see that we are, in almost all of the areas, we are exceeding that average, and we're very close in the well-managed, we have a 3.57 average where the overall is a 3.58, but in all the other areas, we are exceeding that. And then the last column is, the last time Advanced Ed, we, this is our third time that we've engaged in that external review, the first time was in 2009, they did not have this Elliot Tool. But in 2014, they did have the Elliot Tool, and they came and they visited our classrooms, and these were the ratings that they gave us back in 2014. And you can see, when you compare those to our ratings now, we very much, we have grown in all of those areas, in those ratings, quite significantly in some cases, like from a 2.75 to a 3.32. And then even in our lowest rating of our digital learning environment, back in 2014, we were at a 1.48, and we have grown to a 1.74. So those are significant growths in the ratings over time, and these are all ratings from our outside evaluators. So then this slide shows, Advanced Ed gives you a holistic score overall, and they call it their index of education quality. And so they take in all of the standards that we looked at over time from the leadership capacity, the learning capacity domain, and the resource capacity domain, and then they come up with a holistic score. And our holistic score this year for 2019, or IEQ, which they call it, is a 357.42. And this is a range between 100 and 400, so we are on the high end of that. So the next level there, that I have in there, that is the AIN, five-year IEQ range. So this is, for the past five years, all of the schools that are Advanced Ed, that get, receive Advanced Ed Accreditation, the range of their ratings. And the range of their ratings is 278.34 to 283.33. So we are very much above the average range of all of the Advanced Ed, which is a good thing. And then another thing to compare it to, back in 2014, we also received an IEQ, and you can see our IEQ back in 2014 was 354. So we have moved the needle just a bit, as in the last five years of our overall rating, to 357.42. Now, the one thing that I do want to share with you is between 2014 and 2019, their standards, as they're all, they're continuously improving as well, their standards are continuously updated based on the most current best practices. So that IEQ rating, their standards, they were similar to the three domains, but they were not exactly the same standards. It wasn't a one-to-one match, but they still looked at leadership, they still looked at learning quality, and they still looked at resource allocation. But they were a little bit different, so that was just one thing. But you can see, we are moving up the range and continuously getting better. So taking all of this information, so what are those next steps? What will we do with this information? Well, we'll take this information, as we've already shared at our Board Advance, and as we continue to talk about our strategic plan, looking at this information to strengthen our district and continue, in our continuous improvement, so that we'll taking this information into developing our goals for our district strategic plan, taking the information for the different schools, they'll use that as they look at their school improvement planning. And it gives us another piece of information, another piece of data to really look at, how do we continue to get better? So what questions might you have?
Later.
I've got a few questions. Under the learning environment ratings, is there any information you can share with the Board under our two weakest areas, the progress monitoring and feedback environment and our digital learning environment? What specifically were they looking for? What are the, I'm assuming there's maybe four or five other bullet points?
Yes.
That relate to those categories?
There are, and I can share with you the specific, more specific information with the Board, and I can actually share the entire report that they have with the Board. But yes, there are, it's very specific. So when they're looking at the progress monitoring and feedback environment, so they're looking at, are students receiving that very specific feedback within their learning? Do they know where they're at within their learning? Can they determine what are the next steps of how they would be evaluated on their learning? So those are some of the specifics.
So it's very specific that we can, or perhaps the Board, but our administration and our teachers can really, I think, what it is that they can do to improve and to have better outcomes for our students.
Correct. Now, and under the digital learning environment piece, and when we actually did our internal ratings, we rated ourselves even lower, because some of the pieces under the digital learning is when you go into a classroom, they're looking at, you know, how are you using any types of devices, or, you know, and it's not just computers or whatever it might be using, you know, the projector it might be using, the sound enhancement system. But in some cases, it's not appropriate at the time you walked into the classroom to be using the devices for any reason. So if you're doing a small group shared reading, it may not be appropriate that you're using a device, you're using, you know, small novels or what have you. So it really depended on the timing of it, and so it's not just that we're not doing it, it just really depends on the timing. Now, there might be a time you go in and say, this could be something that the device really could help enhance learning, and so there's kind of a different piece. But before you do the Elliot Observations, all of our principals that did the Elliot Observations, there is a very specific training that they all needed to go through and get certified to do that, because they do want to have some consistency, and then all of our Advanced Ed Engagement Review Teams had to do that same training. So, but there's still some subjectivity within that. But we can certainly share the more information of how these break down with the entire Elliot Tool. If you can see that.
My second question, years ago, we would have cohort type of school system, that we would compare our data to their data. And when we're looking at Advanced Ed, the AIN is for everybody. Do they also break this down into cohort school, that we would have another comparison to see how well we are doing?
Right. So Advanced Ed does not do that similar schools report. We do have another tool that, looking at similar schools report, as looking at growth of our students, that we actually receive through NWA, that I can share with you at a later board meeting, as we look at student achievement data and growth. But that, what that is looking at is so, and it's really drilling it down even to the schools. So it's looking at a school that is similar to College Wood, looking at schools all across the country and how their students are growing, and then it's looking at a different set of schools for Orchard Park, based on their demographics. And then it shows you how are we comparing to the growth of the other schools. But Advanced Ed doesn't do, like, there's other matrix out there that we used to use the similar schools report out there, but Advanced Ed doesn't do that specific with their information.
Pam?
Yes. You stole one of my questions. So next steps, it seems like in 2014, when we're looking at digital learning environment, we had a 1.48, and even in 2019, the average is 1.50. And even in 2019, the average is 1.50. So are they, are they letting schools know what they're expecting prior to coming? Because it seems like nobody's improving in that area, and that's been over five years.
Well, we are improving in that area.
I mean, we're improving, but...
From a 1.48 to a 1.74.
Yeah.
But as I just shared, when you're looking at those very specific areas under the digital learning piece, they're looking at, like, right now, if they came in, if we were a classroom, and we all have computers sitting in front of us, we would score very highly. It doesn't matter what we're doing on it necessarily, but they see that we all have tools in front of us. But it's more nuanced than that. It's not just that you have the tools, because we have the tools in the classroom, but it's how are you using them to really amplify the learning? So are you using those tools in a way that makes that learning even better? And in some cases, using a chart paper really is a better tool than using the digital tool. So, but the way their Elliott observation, the tool uses, it is saying, you know, where are we seeing these instances in the classrooms?
So do they think that 84 observations at 20 minutes apiece is adequate enough to really make a decision on how a school is?
Well, this was, now, keep in mind, this was just one piece of all of it. This was not, this did not, this was not the only piece that gave us that yellow mark on emerging. They used, that was one piece of rating us against the data. But they also used their stakeholder feedback when they talked with students, when they talked to teachers, when they talked to parents, when they talked to all of you, when they talked to administrators, they used that piece of information. They looked at our documentation, and we shared our journey over the last several years. That was another piece in where they felt like we were still emerging. So it wasn't just the observation piece that they used to make their decision on where we're at, on that 3.5.
Okay. So since we're the best at getting better, I guess we're going to be working on it, huh?
Actually, I want to make a comment about that, because really, the things that they noticed, they noted as emerging were things that we identified as emerging. So we did not have a large discrepancy with what we found. Our self-study told us that as well. And they kind of reconfirmed that, you know, with their observations like we did. I will tell you, though, even this year, since we've increased the number of devices across the district, and we just got an email today from an administrator that did walk-throughs through a social studies department, and he described three or four different ways that technology is being used, you know, and I would call it being used appropriately to engage students. One was they were studying Indonesia, and they used Google Earth to go and see what it really, you know, kind of what it looked like, what the geography of the land was like, which is pretty cool. And then another students, they were working off a canvas and doing more of a traditional, you know, lesson plan, and they were using that as a resource, you know, and a means. And then there was another one, what was the, do you remember the third? I'm trying to think of the third example. It was a little bit more creative. But, so anyhow, we're seeing, you know, more engagement with the devices. And Amy's exactly right. We don't want to have a, you know, $100, you know, a $200-$300 device that's being used as a notebook.
Right.
We want to be using it creatively and using it for research. And so the rollout's important, and we want our teachers to know how to do that before we put devices in kids' hands. So we're kind of paying the dividends of that strategy coming through. So, so anyhow, I want to say when you look at those, first off, you know, I feel pretty good about two yellow boxes, you know, and there's 100 of them. But at the same time, really, probably the value, would you say, was probably more of our own self-study? And the, I was really impressed when we had our meetings, looking at the rubrics that they had prepared, and really made our administrators think, you know, about holistically about what's going on in our district. It was pretty impressive.
Well, I do like the final score. I mean, we are way outshining all the average schools out there, so.
And we're the best at getting better, not just the best.
We're not into comparisons here.
Right.
We're wanting to get better.
I have a couple of questions and then a suggestion. So when you describe we had an internal review before the team came for the site visit, how often is our internal review? Is it just before they come? Or we are doing it every year? Maybe we tie it into performance or something?
So in the advanced ed, we continuously look at our matrices every year. Like, at the school level, we do that through our school improvement planning each year, and then with our goal setting each year, we look at our student achievement data, we look at where do we need to go, and we set those goals for the different departments. Doing the formal diagnostic piece, we do that every five years. We could use those tools if we wanted to, look at them every year, but they are very holistically. I'm not sure if it would give us as much data to work on using that diagnostic tool every single year. I'm not sure if it would give us, if it would change much from year to year, as it does from each five years.
So the team is looking at the entire five-year period data?
The external, yes.
Uh-huh, the external, okay. And I have a suggestion here. I think that this is a big achievement of our district, really shows how we improve, continuously improve, and we are recognized for our efforts. And I would suggest we put the seal of this advanced ed accreditation somewhere prominent on our website. So in addition to student achievements, this is the achievement of our entire district.
Good suggestion.
No, I just have one question. What is the makeup of the external engagement review committee? Are they former teachers, or are they teachers that are just taking a week off?
Both. So in the engagement review committee, we had, they were all educators. We had a person that was retired. She was a former teacher, administrator, and then she also worked at the Department of Ed. We had the lead evaluator. She was a former teacher and administrator. She's a retired teacher from North Carolina. We had another former teacher and administrator from Kentucky. We had two, actually, that were current teachers. One was a current principal, and one was a current teacher from Terre Haute that came to visit. So that was the makeup of the committee. So they were either practicing teachers and administrators right now, or retired administrators and teachers. And they come from, they came from all levels, from elementary, middle, high school, as well as university level.
And they're all trained by advanced ed to do this kind of review?
And several of our, I mean, I've been on different advanced ed visits. Several of our administrators in the district over the years have been on advanced ed visits. And it's a great, the thing is, it takes, it's hard work, because you work from Sunday all the way until that next Wednesday. But it's really rewarding work, because you learn so many things, too, to bring back to your own district, to say, hey, this was a great idea, or that, you know, and you do learn. But it is, it is very hard work doing that type of work, especially when you're still trying to keep up with everything back at home.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? So next on the agenda is the monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael.
Well, so we're through July, and it's right on target with what we would expect. You can see down at the bottom that we ended our cash balance ended at 18.8 million, up a couple hundred thousand from June, which is, you can compare that to last year, and that's pretty typical. In our operations fund, same thing, we have a little more cash this year as compared to last year. That's really just due to the timing of projects and the expenditures for those projects. So it's early, but again, we would anticipate as we move through the year that our balance will begin to drop, because we will not have yet received referendum funding. So with that, I'll respond to any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. McMichael? Lynn?
I probably should have known this long ago, but I'm just wondering, how are our teachers paid? I know teachers do not work in the summer, so do they get 10 months' pay, or it's pay over 12 months?
It's pay over 12 months. They have a, they have, they receive 26 pays as a standard. They can request 19 pays, which is much closer to the school year. And out of almost, about 950 teachers, less than 10 request that. Almost all staff prefer to have their checks spread throughout the year.
Thank you.
Katie?
This is a financial question, but it's mostly this. When do book rental fees and all that start hitting? When will parents start getting that information?
I don't remember the exact time. I mean, it's quite...
Yeah, after Labor Day. The weekends are set up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Next on the agenda, we have board member reports. We have on the agenda legislative update. Mrs. Spenderberg?
Thank you. I don't have a lot to share, but I do have some important information to share. As you know, we had eight legislative priorities from last session, and while many of our priorities did gain some traction, very few made it to the final round. We did see an increase in our public school funding. Thank you very much, legislators. And so the biennial budget has treated us fairly well, and we've been able to then have additional funds set aside for our teachers, which we feel very thankful for. We were able to, the kindergarten, moving that date, that was one of our priorities, and that did shift to September 1st for this upcoming year. And the legislators also included some additional funding options for safety and security. We have the school safety referendum legislation that came through. And while we, as a district, would have preferred that money to be in the budget, we do appreciate the flexibility in exercising our option to have a referendum. And I know as a board, we've decided that that is a priority, and that we are going to do that. And we've decided in July that we were moving ahead, and so that will be on the November ballot. The other things I did want to report is that the ISBA conference is going to be September 30th and October 1st. And at that conference, the fall conference, the delegates will then approve the legislative priorities for the Indiana School Board Association. And so it'd be my recommendation that we wait as a board to establish our legislative priorities after that has been shared, and then we'll use some of that information, as well as what our priorities are and where our interests lie, to develop our own individual priorities. And in looking at a timeline, my suggestion would be that as soon as I receive those as our legislative delegate, I share those with the board. We come up with some ideas and have a rough draft to be presented at our workshop in October. And then if we're prepared to take final action on our legislative priorities, do that at our October business meeting, at the end of October. And then we can just follow through, as we typically do, share our priorities, have some conversations with our legislators, discuss things with our general counsel, other school districts, and see how we can really get some momentum to move forward some of our priorities. So that's really basically what I have to share at this point, and I'm not sure if you want to offer any feedback on timing, if you have any other suggestions. Feel free. Open for discussion.
Well, thank you for your point. Do we have any comments or questions to discuss? I mean, this is consistent with how we've been doing it for the last few years.
Sort of.
So, okay. All right. Well, to be continued.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Beersford?
Well, we got the school year off very smoothly, and I want to do a little shout-out to, you know, all 2,400 employees that made school happen that first day. And, you know, knock on wood, I really, it's almost like we're in mid-year groove already, because things just seem to be going very smoothly right now. So I really appreciate the work of the whole team in making that happen. I do have a few things I wanted to share with you. One is that our mental health coordinator, Stephanie Whiteside, is going to be hosting a QPR suicide prevention training for Carmel Clay School parents. And that's going to be on September the 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And what QPR is, is question, persuade, respond, and it's for suicide prevention gatekeepers. And it's a kind of a unique, you know, kind of a neat, unique training. But basically, it's kind of like we learned CPR, you know, if someone has a heart attack. This is the same kind of training where average people can intervene in a situation and maybe save a life. So I want to put a shout-out there so that our parents know about that and take advantage of that opportunity. I don't know if you've been watching the news, but this is just crazy. We got these two Carmel swimmers that have been in Budapest at the Junior World Championships. So this is like the Olympics kind of for juniors. And Wyatt Davis and Jake Mitchell have just been, just awesome. And Wyatt, these guys are both seniors at Carmel High School, captured the gold medal at the Junior World Championships in the 200-meter box stroke. He was in fourth place going into the final turn, and he moved a lot of water to win the gold medal. He also got a silver in the 50-meter box stroke and a bronze in the 100-box stroke. So he's got all color variations of medal there. And he also was on relays, and it was two gold medals on relays and a silver. So he's leading with six medals total. He's the first male Indian athlete to win a gold medal, an individual medal at the Junior Worlds. And then Jake Mitchell, another senior, he was on, got a gold medal on the 800-meter freestyle relay. We were behind by probably a couple hundredths of a second, and after his leg, we were up a second and a half. And so he was amazing. And then also, he broke the junior world record. So now he's one of the world record holders with the other three guys in that relay. He was fourth in the 400-meter freestyle, free, and that was the fastest time ever swam by an American 17-year-old. And then he was seventh in the 1500. So these two guys are making a splash worldwide, and I just can't, it's just amazing to me. And these guys are both state champions and, you know, and record holders there, too. So pretty amazing performances are by those two guys. Also wanted to throw out a little shout-out to Courtney Taylor over there and the expedition program. They had their very first meeting, the expedition. They had 29 community members gather, a very engaged crowd, just great questions, very strong group this year. And at that meeting, Dave Woodward and Stephanie Whiteside and DJ Chef presented on school safety. And I thought they did a really great, comprehensive picture of the many, many layers of school safety at Carmel Clay Schools. Now, they didn't show everything, because we don't want to compromise our school safety program, but they were able to give the expedition members a little peek behind the curtain, you know, how we operate, and kind of the complexity of the whole thing. And they just did a fine job. DJ Chef, who's our SRO supervisor, you know, shared with the role of a school resource officer, more than just an armed guard, but someone that really makes relationships with the students and acts as a mentor and as a teacher, and also a police officer if needed. So a real strong program there. And then Stephanie Whiteside, of course, talked about our mental health initiatives and kind of where we are now, and both Dave and her both spoke about where we want to go in the future. And so, anyhow, it was such a very good opening program. Really appreciate that. Carmel Clay Schools was the first ones to come out with a program like this to engage parents and community members, to give them a little idea of how a school system really works. And I love the last one, because people walk out there going, wow, I never knew, you know, there's so much to run in a school's district. But it was really pretty supportive. A lot of the folks in there are very supportive and really want us to have the, you know, the safest schools possible, so I appreciated that as well. So that was the expedition. I did want to report, you know, you mentioned the referendum... I did want to report, you know, you mentioned the referendum. We do have some events coming up. I'm scheduled up, I'm going to be pretty busy here in September and October. I'm going to schedule that, because I'm going to be speaking with the faculties of all of our schools. And state law permits me to share with them factual information about, you know, the referendum. And also, I need to share with them, because there's a lot of rules about referendums, so some of the do's and don'ts that as school personnel, what they're allowed to do and what they are not allowed to do. And so that's important, meaning to have with all those. And then we've scheduled four community meetings, again, where we can share some information about, factual information about the referendum. I have a double bell ringer, so, and this is kind of my second double bell ringer, but I couldn't decide to pick one over the other one. But I'm, this is great. Just, this is just the caliber of teachers we have in our district. Angela Snyder is a middle school math teacher, and she was chosen as a state finalist by the Indiana Department of Education for the 2018-19 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. And she teaches eighth grade math and is the chair of the math department at Creekside. And so she is now in a national competition for the Presidential Awards. And the White House is going to announce the national winners later this year. So it is quite an honor to be chosen as, you know, that finalist for Indiana, so it's pretty amazing. And then Amanda Dillon, our Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. We're really excited that she made the top thirty and represented our school district so well. Well, she's now in the top ten.
Ooh, yeah.
So congratulations to Amanda for being named a top-ten finalist for Indiana Teacher of the Year. And just couldn't be happier for her. I got to visit her classroom, and she really is, she is really something special. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you is something I shared with our entire staff today. And it was a little, a good friend of mine sent me this, and it's called "The Power of a Positive Educator." And it was just too good not to share, so I sent it out to the staff today. And it's by a guy named John Gordon. And he said, "When I think about the teachers who may have a difference in my life, I realize that they're all positive. Mrs. Leoto smiled every day and made me feel loved. Coach Kazera believed in me, while Mr. Airman encouraged me to be my best. Years later, I think the impact these teachers had on my life, and it's clear that a positive educator not only makes you better, it makes you, it makes everyone around you better. Positive educators have the power to transform lives and inspire young minds to believe they can and will change the world. In this spirit, here are seven ways we can all choose to be a positive educator." And I won't go into all the detail of these, but the first one is to be positively contagious, because research shows that emotions are contagious. Sincere smiles, kind words, encouragement, positive energy infect people in a positive way. Number two is to take a daily thank-you walk. It's simple, it's powerful, and yet it's a great way to feed yourself with positivity. How does it work? You simply take a walk. You simply take a walk, outside, in a mall, at your school, on a treadmill, or anything else you can think of, and think about all the things, big and small, that you are grateful for. Research shows you can't be stressed and thankful at the same time.
[laughing]
That's pretty solid. Number three is celebrate success. One of the simplest, most powerful things you can do for yourself and your students is to celebrate your daily successes. Instead of thinking of all the things that went wrong at school each day, focus on the one thing that went right. Try this, each night before you go to bed, think about one great thing about your day. And if you do that, if you do that, you will look forward to creating more successes tomorrow. Number four is expect to make a difference. When positive educators walk into their classroom, they expect to make a difference in their students' lives. In fact, making a difference is the very reason they became a teacher in the first place, and this purpose continues to fuel them in their teaching. Number five, believe in your students more than they believe in themselves. I tried to quit lacrosse during my freshman year in high school, but Coach Kazera wouldn't let me. He told me I was going to play in college one day. He had a vision for me I couldn't even fathom. He believed in me more than I believed in myself. I ended up going to Cornell University, and the experience of playing lacrosse changed my life forever. And number six, develop positive relationships. Author Andy Stanley said, "Rules without relationships will lead to rebellion." So he said, "Far too many principals share the rules with their teachers, but they don't have a relationship with them, and far too many teachers don't have positive relationships with their students." So what happens? Teachers and students disengage from the mission of the school. I've had many educators approach me and tell me that my books help them realize they need to focus less on the rules and invest more in relationships. The result was a dramatic increase in teacher and student performance, morale, and engagement." So that's something that you've been pursuing before I got to Carmel Clay Schools, and it's definitely a pursuit we have right now. And then finally, number seven is to show your care. It's a simple fact. The best educators stand out by showing their students and colleagues that they care about them. So it ends up with, it finishes with the positive teacher pledge, and I think it's a good pledge, and I'll just share it quickly with you. "I pledge to be a positive teacher and a positive influence on my fellow educators, students, and school. I promise to be positively contagious and share more smiles, laughter, encouragement, and joy with those around me. I vow to stay positive in the face of negativity. When I'm surrounded by pessimism, I will choose optimism. When I feel fear, I will choose faith. When I want to hate, I will choose love. When I want to be bitter, I will choose to get better. When I experience a challenge, I will look forward for opportunity, for an opportunity to learn and grow and help others grow. When faced with adversity, I will find strength. When I experience a setback, I will be resilient. When I meet failure, I will fall forward and create a future success. With vision, hope, faith, I will never give up, and I will always find ways to make a difference. I believe the best days are ahead of me, not behind me. I believe I'm here for a reason, and my purpose is greater than my challenges. I believe that being positive not only makes me better, but it makes my students better." And with that, I will finish my superintendent's report.
Well, thank you for the report. Thank you for all those positive thoughts and comments. Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Bannenberg.
Actually, I just have one. You had said you have the, you're scheduling faculty talks at each of our schools, and you said there are four community nights. Do you have dates for those community nights?
We'll be putting those dates out once we get them all confirmed with the buildings, and we've got the, have scheduled for the staff meetings, but we're just now almost complete with getting them all set up for the community meeting. So we'll be getting that information out soon.
Okay. And if people have questions about what the referendum is, do we have information someplace for them to seek?
We do. On our website, under the About tab, there's a section there called "School Safety Referendum." Indiana law permits us to put factual information out, so that people will know exactly what the facts are about the referendum, including like the referendum question that's going to be on the ballot, and Frequently Asked Questions. And then we also put some things on there for staff and different groups, so that they know the rules of the referendum, so they follow them.
Thank you. And following up on that, so the Frequently Asked Questions page went up on the website last week, and then we've already had some media outlets reach out to us to cover that story and help educate the voters. So I just want to share that with the community and the board members. I do have one other question. Do we, you said that the QPR training is on September 24th. Do we have a location for that?
Right here in the PMR, same.
Thank you. Any other questions? Lila?
That QPR training, I could be mistaken, but I thought when I had seen that online, it's limited to a number of people, so you have to register in advance. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It would be great if we had too many people sign up for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
The QPR, well, the video that we showed about the QPR training, is that on our website? Because that was really good. That was a really good information to explain why it's so important for the community to be trained.
Yeah, it's currently not on our website. We've talked about pushing that out, and I don't know if that's something we'll push out, like through the Parent Resource Center, or if we'll just push that out with social media. But I agree, it's, it really does kind of bring home the notion that, just like we, you know, have CPR, or, you know, we have First Aid and Stop the Bleed Training, those types of things, that we should have the same kind of training. I think the video said something like, it takes hundreds to save thousands, it takes thousands to, you know, to save millions, and so we need a lot of people to be trained in order to have the greatest conversations that could save a life.
Thank you. So upcoming dates, September, Monday, September 2nd is Labor Day, no school. September 9th is our school board workshop session. September 23rd is school board regular session. We just started school, but October 10th and 11th is fall break. And then October 14th, we have a school board workshop session. So with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.